Did you give them that, Ms. Daniels?
My apologies for you not having that or it has not been available. We met with the departments, I have met with each one of those which are on my transition plan, but I met back with them after Ms. Daniels told me our challenge and what we was tasked to do today, so that she was present when I met with them to talk about the tasks that we had. So, I'd like to go down each of these items, one by one, and some of them, you may have seen them in a previous proposal that you had prior to my getting here. But, in the first one there with the police department, we talked with the chief, and we could reduce by one officer, and we would freeze one vacant police officer position, including salaries and benefits. He currently have two openings down there, and he also indicated that throughout the year, most of the time, he's not fully staffed, and so, he feels that that one officer, if we reduce his department by one, that we should be okay getting this through the year. That second reduction there is to freeze one vacant dispatch position, including salaries and benefits. Currently, he have five, there's seven or eight that's on the budget form, eight at least, and that if we reduce one of those, and the salaries and benefits of that would be the forty-nine thousand, zero, four, one, and that first column, it would be sixty-nine, six, zero, two. Also, with the police, the department, they have quite a bit of overtime. We looked at that and asked to reduce the police overtime by twenty thousand. In the police department, the reduction of police uniforms, he had a nice budget for uniforms, and he agreed that six thousand dollars should be workable, to take six thousand out of that compartment. The next line item, police department, reduce the gasoline and diesel by ten percent, and that will be six thousand, four hundred dollars, without as many officers. That means that we should have fewer cars out, and there's a few other things when it comes to other departments, when it comes to vehicles, that would be for a later date. Fire department, talked with the fire chief, he currently have three vacant firefighter's position, we've asked if we can possibly take one of those positions, and he would still have currently two vacancies, and if we take that one, and reduce the number of firefighters by one, that would be six of three thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars, salaries and benefits. Also, with the fire department, a look at reduction in the amount of the uniform line item by six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We went to building and planning department, we still have funds in that budget for a director or coordinator of some sort, for which we really need, because we have some projects that need some review and need some expertise that we don't have. However, the position is not filled, and we didn't take it out, but we are, we can take one of the code enforcement officers. We have one currently, and if we take one, that would be fifty-four thousand, seven eighty-one dollars that we can take out of that. Over at the recreation department, reduce the various recreation operating line items, twenty-nine thousand, five hundred. We noticed that, or I noticed, that there's quite a bit of money in the recreation department, and we will continue to, I will continue to monitor that and look at it to see if additional, but most of that is maintenance people who's are responsible for the grounds and the upkeeps, and they work hand in hand with public's works. So, there's only one director and one staff person down there, and so, but we did feel like we could reduce the operating line items by twenty-nine thousand, five hundred for now. Parks operations, reduce this, reduction to the various operation of the parks line items, ten thousand, nine hundred dollars. Public works, we talked with Mr. Bell at public works, and reduction in the stormwater maintenance, for which in the past couple of years, he have not used all of the funds that was allocated there, and so, he said that we think that we could reduce by twenty thousand there. We did tap into the finance department, three thousand dollars reduction to various financial operation line items. Also, there was an indication that it was budgeted and a need for some furniture items, for which I've advocated that at this particular time, we would not be making expenditures, and I'll make sure that all departments recognize that, as when it comes to furniture and things of that nature, we would use what we have until we get a handle on our budget. And then, we have some non-departmental reductions, a reduction to the property liability and retiree insurance by twenty thousand. All of those are coming from the general fund, a total of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars. And then, when it comes to the guff breeze on the local reserve, we, you currently approved the seventy-five thousand dollars in the original budget, and so, we're proposing, we're to take the one hundred and forty thousand dollars, for which we're thinking we'll get about two hundred thousand dollars from that fund, and use it for the services, and not bother the seventy-five thousand that's already allocated for the reserve, and that would give us a total of five hundred thousand dollars that could be put back into the contingency fund. We're also at a meeting, we will be recommending that we freeze all hiring positions, they must be approved by the city manager and the commissioners, with the exception of the city clerk and the executive assistant, for which has already been indicated that there's a need, to the best of my knowledge, I've been told, and that we could move forward with hiring those two individuals. And I'll
Commissioner
I'll offer Ms. Daniels to come up, just in case of deep dive questions.
Well, thank you, Mayor. City manager appreciate the report, it is, it gets us to, I think, the number we wanted to make sure we tackled on the, on the front end of reducing that five hundred thousand. I think there, the only, there's a couple of corrections, I think, need to be made in the description line, where we're going to freeze one vacant firefighter position, right now, it says three, and then, under the building and planning, it says freeze the vacant planner and code enforcement, so I think it should just re-freeze the vacant code enforcement position. The other thing, I would ask that we, there may be the potential for, for some additional reductions in the parks maintenance side, depending upon, I'll say this, what happens with the CRA funding moving forward. We're looking at a project at the CRA where we would contract with a nonprofit youth organization that has come forward with a proposal to do the lawn maintenance, and that would be at a couple of the cemeteries and a couple of the parks, and I think Tanyard, Tanyard Creek Park was one of those, that potentially is going to be in that contract, again, if it moves forward with the CRA. I think there were some discussions with Mr. Bell about the money that's, what's being spent on, you know, maintaining parks, and it's basically the lawn maintenance, I think. So, there may be some, some additional there, again, depending upon what happens at the CRA. But, I'm very appreciative of you bringing this forward, and I, at this point, I agree with, with all of those reductions that staff has recommended.
Moving forward, I plan to attend, I don't know exactly my role right now, other than sign off on some things that I probably wouldn't be aware of, if I wasn't at the meetings to kind of hear it and see the minutes from the meetings, and currently, with me trying to find minutes of previous minutes, it's a little challenge, but Ms. Brunson has agreed to work with me to try to help me to go back into the meetings and be able to see those things, but that would definitely help us if there was CRA funding that would cover a group and insurance and everything, to get those things, or some areas that the parks and wrecks currently cover are public works. And, this is my first time making a presentation, Mr. Harris, he was a little bit late, but we've talked with all of the department heads, for which the items that you see, it says police department, fire department, building, planning, recreation, parks, finance, so we, I've actually sat down with everybody, including one-on-one with the finance director, I sat down with him the day before, one-on-one, to just kind of get a feel, and so, all of these items and things are coming out of the general fund, and the positions for which the police and the fire department, they're currently vacant anyway, and so, and they still have some other vacancies, and so, the advocacy would be to take one of the positions for which is not filled, and the discussion has been that history, and I haven't looked at the history, but history in both of those gentlemen, which has been there for a while, they're not fully staffed all year anyway, with the numbers, because they're coming and leaving.
Correct.
Commissioner Harris.
Thank you. One of the, and this is staff recommendation, right? This, this is the recommendation coming from staff?
Yes.
Okay, and has this taken into consideration any of the other recommend, well, you, you weren't here, but there was some other recommendations that was presented on the dais, and this is absent of any of that, right? So, I just want to make sure.
No, some of these things was on that, was on that list, and they may not have been listed exactly like this, you know, like code enforcement, we have two, so we want to take one, and that would still leave, leave one, and all of this is out of general fund.
And the reason why I'm asking that question is because it was a recommendation, and we've requested that staff bring us a ten percent reduction across the board, regardless as to what it looks like, we want to see it. What does ten percent look like coming from your department? You know, and, and we have yet to, to receive that. I mean, I, I get it, and everything that's here, I can agree with, but we have yet to meet that request of what ten percent across the board, all departments look like. In other words, as a commissioner, I want to know, if we take ten percent from your departments, how many employees is that? What are the, what are the things that we would have to forego? That, that's information that we, that we've asked for and would like to have.
Okay, so
In other words, it, it may be a hard peel, but we just want to know what it takes, what does ten percent look like, and that helps us get, get a clear picture of, of where we are, and, and for example, if we had to take ten percent from our police department, what does that include? Is that positions, is that equipment, is that cars? We just want to know. And I'd much rather staff give us the recommendation or give us that picture, as opposed to us sitting here on the dais trying to, you know, make that decision.
Okay.
And if it means that we have to reduce personnel, we, as a commissioner, I just want to know, what does that mean? And what does it look like? So, we have yet to receive that, and that has been a request like twice already.
Okay, so, my first time hearing it, and so
Right.
So, for clarity, each department, the police chief, the fire chief, parks and wrecks, everybody will just take their budget, take ten percent, and say, this is what ten percent looks like, although we may or may not act upon it.
Correct, yes, yes, I mean, and, and it may not even be doable, you know, but we want to know, and I would like to see that in terms of operating costs as well as personnel.
Okay, so, ten percent altogether, not
Altogether, yes, yes. I mean, in other words, don't, don't take all the trucks out and then leave all the employees, and there ain't no trucks to drive, I mean, make it make, in other words, staff needs to make it make sense.
Well, the only, the, the only concern that I have initially, and remember, I'm just hearing this, the only concern that I have is, they give you that, and if we act upon it, but they're saying they can't manage with that.
And, and that's, and that's the conversation that we need to have around the dais, it's not like you give it to me, and then we put it to a boat, and we're done, and that's how we're forced to function. I just think that this dais needs to be able to have a conversation on what can we forego? And I think I mentioned it to you, just in casual conversation, it's time out of trying to manage a city that cannot function financially, and, and so, we've got to make the hard cuts, we've got to make tough decisions, so that we can get where we need to be financially, and then figure out how to move forward, that, that's just my opinion, thank you, thank you, sir.
That, that makes it very clear, I understand that.
My comments are, yes, this covers the five hundred thousand that we need for our deficit, but it doesn't give us any extra to do any projects or any things that may be necessary for the survival of the city. So, we may have to go a little deeper with, with our recommendations and our cuts. I like to start with what you've presented, and, but again, I think, like I say, we're at a deficit, and we need some, some cushion to be able to have projects, or capital projects to be able to fund, that benefits and sustains the city as well. So, as you go back and talk, please look at how much more can our departments go in terms of cuts and reductions, I would request.
Okay, just want to make sure, as we're clear, it's two totally separate objectives here. One objective is to have them to do a
Ten percent
Ten percent cross border.
Yes, recommended by Commissioner Harris.
And we probably know it may, may or may not be doable. The other objective, for which we tried to accomplish today, was to look at things that was doable, so now, I've got the one with the ten percent straight across, do we, do we talk to them about what was doable, and this seems to be what's doable, but now, when we get the cross, you still want to come back with more, I just want to make sure.
Well, I'm not incorporating the ten percent that is requested by Commissioner Harris, I'm just saying, can the departments go further or deeper in terms of reduction, because we're going to need to look at it and make sure that we cover those things within the city that provide the services, as well as the project, projects that will sustain us, if that makes sense. And I'm not sure if stopping at five hundred thousand dollars, which covers our deficit, will do that for us, and, and be left without the flexibility of having any revenue. If our revenue gets shorter, we still going to have to go back and make additional hard decisions about what we can do and what we cannot do, if I'm making sense. So, I'd rather we have the hard discussion upfront, in terms of, this is a beginning, but if we take it to another level, what else can we reduce? Commissioner Knight.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, for providing us with this proposed reduction list, I think it's a good first step, what the commissioner was asking for in the ten percent, just to see what that ten percent cut across the board will look like for the city of Quincy and our finances. This reduction, five hundred, of that five hundred thousand dollars helps us put that money, that money back into our contingency, that it was used to help balance our budget, was that correct? The reserve, to help balance our budget, but we wanted to, and I actually like how you outlined the different line items on this sheet for the police department, because I was looking at something more along the lines, of course, that ten percent, what it actually looked like for each department, but also, the use of facilities and fleet operations, you know, I just can't see myself pulling out of the personnel just yet, it depends on what I see it looks like, I know that's a very touchy issue, but just looking at those different things to make each of our departments in the city of Quincy run more efficiently, and looking at a budget that police department thinks is the biggest driver of that, I think is the biggest
A little over three million dollars.
And I need to take a look at their collective bargaining agreement with this, with this city, but have we also looked at a, implementing a fleet reduction or vehicle pooling program, or upgrading our buildings to make them more energy efficient, like LED lights, HVAC timers, things of that nature? And I ask that because I ride just by the city hall, and there's lights on all throughout the night.
That's for security and police, that's for, that's, that's for, that's for security, yeah, it's, it's called
Somebody has a face on lights.
Somebody, somebody
Won't steal. You know, if I may, when it comes to the fleet, of course, the contract in the police department kind of drives, kind of drives that, as far as how many cars, or each officer have a car, and that they could drive it and have access to it, and the range from the city limits, I haven't did a deep dive, but I do, I have read that much, non-police officers, you know, we can look to see if there's any non-police officers that have a access to a car. Same thing with the fire department, I think the chief over there is the only one, but we can make sure that that's the case, and then, public works, their vehicles, with the exception of the director, probably, is, is all public work vehicles, but I will definitely take a look at a list of non-public service people who have access to a vehicle, and we will definitely, if there is no contractual agreement or nothing that says in their job hiring or whatever in writing, that they're to have access to that, and there may be a few, I don't know, but I'll have Ms. Daniels to provide me with that information, or whoever is responsible will provide me that information tomorrow, and then, we can definitely take that out, I'll look into taking it out.
Thank you, please excuse my tardiness, it was a bit more traffic than I thought it would be today. Couple of things since I came in, one thing, I don't think, now, Ms. Daniels, you can correct, correct me, but I don't think we have contractual agreements for people who have vehicles, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, you won't be able to get that tomorrow, because they don't have it.
Well, I got it tonight.
They put that in front of me. That is probably something that we can look into, but I, I don't, that is a little trivial to me. Couple of things, as I've just kind of perused through this a few minutes ago, we worked very, very hard, very hard, on this commission, to make sure that our police department was fully staffed and hired, getting those extra police officers, so I'm a little, you know, I'm a little concerned about that first one, when you're talking about freezing positions, when we really cannot keep our police officers there as it is, they're, you know, it's a revolving door in some cases, but I really, you know, that one, I probably will have a little trouble with, because I, we worked so hard to get those positions there, I think we gave two more positions, and then, I don't know as far as their union contract, making sure that that's even possible to do, but I do have a little trouble with the first one, just off the bat, also, the
Commissioner Wood, could you hold your thought, and just, I want to kind of address them as you go, if that's okay?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, we did sit down with the police chief, and we looked at the number of officers, and he looked at contractual as far as their contract they have, he have several vacancies currently, and so, that one, he strongly feels that he would be fine, and that in the past couple of years, he have not been fully staffed throughout the year, and so, therefore, we did make, say, we will recommend that we freeze all hiring, with the exception of the city clerk and the executive assistants, and then, we could add the police officers and the fire, to make sure that the vacancies that they have is filled as well, and would not have to come back before the commission or the mayor for approval to move forward with the hiring.
Well, we already have a, the freeze on the positions at the city level, right? Is that correct?
We, we have a
Frozen, I know we requested that they be frozen.
Be frozen unless they were absolutely needed.
Now, you're going to have to clarify, because that's not, that's not what we said. We said to freeze the positions at the city of Quincy, it was no, unless they were absolutely necessary.
That's exactly why we bring that up.
So, we're going to need to make sure that's clarified for me, because that's not what we voted on, on this dais. Now, when you say absolutely necessary, could you kind of expound on that for me, because I'm not sure what that means.
Let's say we, we were, God forbid, lose a lineman.
Lose?
A lineman.
Oh, lineman, okay.
In order for us to be able to respond, we may need to fill that lineman's position, but that would be with the city manager's approval, and in some cases, the approval of the, the commission, because again, we have to be able to safely respond to power outages, and if we, sometimes we have linemen that are on light duty, if we need to fill that position to safely be able to respond to the needs of the community, it's a matter of public safety.
So, after a vote to freeze positions with that, not if that would come back to the commission, correct? So, it would be still based on, it still would be unfreezing, right? So, if you say freeze, then that's what typically that would mean, right? And any change in that from this commission, it would come back to this commission, right? So, that, I don't think there were stipulations, I understand what you're saying, I'm just saying that's not how we
That is
Yes, so I get it, but there is a freeze already in place for the city of Quincy.
For clarification, just want to make sure that the city clerk and the executive assistant is exempt from that freeze, I'm asking.
Well, those were already positions that were filled, so those, yeah, we were, I'm talking about new positions that we had.
I don't think the executive assistant was filled.
Well, we, it was split between one person, so
Okay, so now that we have that, so we can move forward with those two?
Yeah, so that, those are, because those people were already in place, you know, so similar to your lineman, that person's already there, it's not a new position, but I'm saying it's just
No, there are no new positions, there are no new
Yes, so I get that, and then, the overtime for the police officers, it says reduce police overtime, now, is this realistic? Can this realistically be done?
According to
Twenty thousand dollars.
According to Chief Hill, I think there's about a hundred and twenty thousand, and he's had, the past couple of years, at least twenty thousand dollars remaining, and be mindful, I'm a hands-on kind of a budget, and we would be monitoring this, and we hope that all of these, not all, a lot of these items that will still have not be one hundred percent expended upon the end of the year, but, yes, we had the conversation with chief, and matter of fact, he was the one who looked at the budget and recommended it.
All right, and then three vacant firefighter?
That's just one, and that's just the type.
That was a correction.
Oh.
That's one.
That's supposed to be one?
Yes.
There, there are two corrections on here, on the, uh.
Planner, down the next.
Planner, it's just freeze the vacant code enforcement officer, strike out vacant planner.
Okay, so not the planner, just. All right, and I would like us to look at, when we do get revenue, we, we need another code enforcement officer. Um, so that, that's important, I know we might need to do that now, but we need more than one. Um, because I was looking at the amount, I was wondering planner and code enforcement, fifty-four thousand. Okay, so just one position.
And this is a recycled document, it's just something I left in, in the document.
Okay, and then the various recreation operating line items, are those, what are those? What, I don't know what that means.
Uh, he had things like repair and maintenance he might have had, and I, I don't have it in front of me, like four thousand dollars a year, six thousand dollars and another.
Was it the one that we already have that he had itemized?
He, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's the one we already have, okay, so nothing changed.
And I just lumped them all together instead of having all of those little line items in there.
Okay, okay.
It's a total of, of twenty-nine.
Okay, yes, he did, he provided that, so.
Plus the next line says operating line items as well.
And that's for the, uh, parks area.
Okay.
One is recreation, the twenty-nine is recreation, and the ten is parks.
And same thing with finance, operating line items.
The, the thing with finance is that there's not, other than position, because finance is split. This is just the general fund portion. The other portion is the business activity portion, and that is where all of the enterprise funds pay into that because we're doing a lot of work for them. Uh, and that's where the majority of anything that, that finance has is on that side. This is just the general fund and they, you know, we have, uh, let's say we have, uh, office supplies. The majority of the office supplies are on the business activity side, and there's just a little bit here on the general fund side. So we just, you know, pick those things and, and, and kind of, uh, reduce those things that were in the general fund.
So you're only on here, it's clarified, talking about reducing staff in the police department and building and planning? With the code enforcement officer.
Fire and.
In the fire.
And recreation, well.
Well, there are no positions.
No, no, just, just fire.
You are correct, uh, fire, police.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
And the code enforcement.
So three positions that are already vacant, correct?
Well, four, because one of the, there's another, uh, dispatcher.
And how many dispatchers are there?
They're currently budgeted for eight, and I believe they have five on staff.
Five that are in, that are on staff, so you still have three vacancies.
Is that three vacancies now?
And then, and but one you're gonna.
You're recommending.
So two.
Not to replace just one.
Let me, um, you know, uh, when we do the, when I do the transition plan, um, there will be some recommendations as far as some staff concerns, but almost all of the other positions are filled, and there's bodies in the position. So if at this point in this juncture, we want to look at, um, eliminating some positions that have bodies in them, then if that's the direction that, uh, I get from this, uh, dius, then we would definitely look at that. But this doesn't, uh, include, um, departments and positions that have a person currently working in them, which means that.
Don't, don't misunderstand, I'm not trying to get rid of any positions, I just want to be clear on what I'm looking at. Um, I do want, think we need to look at combining some things, I think some people could.
Do more?
Let me, let me, let me make sure.
More responsibility?
I think some people are idle and could probably benefit from having some more.
Responsibilities.
Yes, thank you, that's it. So that they're not idle, because we want to make sure we're making use of our time for an eight-hour day or whatever you're working. And that's just based on, you know, uh, I really want you to dive deep into that peer review, um, and see what their recommendations were. I think some of them were really good.
Believe it or not, I have it.
Yes, I'm sure you do. Um, so not looking to really eliminate positions, but I can tell you, we can do all of these things. And we can do a lot of other things. But most of your revenue, most of the money that you're saving is going to come from how many positions you have within the City of Quincy. And if they're necessary to have. So combining some posi- positions, moving some people around may actually save us some money. And I'm sure you'll get the opportunity to look into that as you move forward, that's your arena, not mine. Um, but just based on research, that's, that's where it is, you know? Nobody wants to lose their jobs, of course, um, but restructuring some of our departments, I don't think would hurt. Thank you so much for this, and I'll rest my comments there.
Yeah, um, we have Commissioner Knight, but I'll say that, uh, you'll find out part of our, uh, that a large part of our budget is personnel, and it's over thirty percent, and that tends to be where we are drawing the most of our expenditures.
It's about thirty-seven percent.
Yeah, thirty, uh, to be exact, okay, I wasn't off thirty-seven percent, and that's high for our organization, our size. Uh, Commissioner Knight.
Um, I like the discussion that we're having around the dius, um, and I see our finance threat for the city is maybe a little concerning. We're, we're cutting a little too deep, a little too close to the bone without our, uh, cutting government fat. But one of the things that I would like for the city to embark on is different rev- expanding our revenue sources here in the city, outside of grants and things like that, creating new enterprise, something that I thought of, uh, think of quite recently is maybe potentially starting back our own trash services, refuse here in the city. Um, just off the top of your head, and I hate putting you down on the spot, but do you know how much a month do we pay to Waste Pro?
Uh, we pay Waste Pro, um, somewhere in the ballpark of about a hundred and, I'm really just gonna say around about, about a hundred and thirty thousand. It's less than that, I'm gonna pay one, two, three, and then there's another smaller piece that we pay, so let's say one.
So it's about a hu- uh, million five a year to Waste Pro? Uh, and I guess this is a conversation I have with the manager and the commissioners, uh, you know, on the dius. We might want to start taking a look at saving money that way. You know, Waste Pro maybe have been good to the city over the couple of years, but, you know, we can potentially say that one point three, one point five million dollars a year, um, definitely a month, that, uh, could be beneficial to us, the city. So just looking at different revenue sources and potential, um, new interfi- enterprise funds that we can embark upon in the future. So that's just a conversation I'm willing to have when it comes to expanding our revenue sources here in the city.
Um, I would encourage us to, when we look at those kinds of things, to do feasibility analysis on the benefit because, uh, several months ago, Waste Pro met with Mr. Ash and Mr. Bell. And Mr. Bell confessed that he does not have the capabilities like Waste Pro. So we may be thinking we're saving, but we would have to totally equip the city with not only personnel training, um, insurance, but equipment that, um, the city does not have at this time. So, uh, I would caution us in terms of shifting at this point, but really holding, um, our contractors more accountable. And, uh, Mr. Bell, uh, and Waste Pro and Mr. Ash was doing some renegotiation regarding items of the contract. And, um, we're bringing, as I understand it, amendments to their contract forth to the commission so that we could see some, a little more benefit and involvement from Waste Pro in terms of their efficiency and effectiveness with the City of Quincy. Uh, Commissioner?
If I may?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I love the thought of, uh, ways to increase revenue, because at some point, we must do that. Yeah, that's a must, and, uh, it's to comment upon, and under this administration, I certainly invite each of you, uh, and anybody who may be listening to us right now, uh, like I did this morning at the staff meeting in this building. Uh, we're open to all suggestions, uh, and so it's not just the manager and the finance director. It's coming upon all of us, uh, to look at ways and how we may be able to, uh, increase the revenue because, you know, once you reduce, reduce, especially let's take public works for instance, uh, those gentlemen, and the most male, with the exception of the clerical, so that staff, uh, seem to do a pretty good job. And there's a lot, there's a lot to do. Now, I'm not sure about, uh, how much more they can add and, you know, that we can probably, but as we take more and more people away, that means that that becomes even more for them. And so the revenue and looking at how we could, uh, bring in more revenue is definitely something that we must do uh, as we move forward with our budget.
Commissioner Harris?
Thank you. Um, as, as, as eloquent and as nice as Commissioner Wood was about personnel, I'm just gonna give it to you raw. Too many employees, not enough efficiency here in City Hall. We got too many problems in City Hall. And to have those many employees with those many problems mean we either got a skill level issue or we got too many employees doing nothing. Um, we're gonna have to address the personnel issue, and I don't mind taking the hit for it. I mean, as, as much as we want to sound good that we don't want to lay anybody off, we don't want to send employees home, we don't want to do X, Y, and Z, our job is to run good government, our job is to run an efficient government. Our job is not to be the employment agency for the City of Quincy. And I charge you, Mr. Manager, to adequately assess every employee from the top to the bottom in their skill and their productivity, and are they producing what they need to produce for the City of Quincy? Because our citizens deserve it. And as you said, we're running about thirty-seven percent personnel cost right now. That's a lot when you consider the size of this government. And yeah, we gonna get criticized, they, they gonna come up and they gonna talk at this podium about how we're laying people off and sending people home, but we can't run good government and keep everybody employed and keep incurring those costs. So I'm suggesting, or I'm saying, that I see four here, but we gonna have to see those numbers increase. Now, how it happens, that just happens to be your job. And, and, and I will support whatever makes sense and what, what is best efficient for this city. I will support you a hundred percent. Uh, in terms of the ten percent, now, this dius did agree that we wanted to see a ten percent reduction across the board prior to you coming. I don't mean ten percent aside from what's, what we've been given here, all of this is doable, and I'm willing to support it a hundred percent. Um, so in other words, just as an example, when we go back to the departments, if building and planning has already found fifty-four thousand seven eighty-one dollars, you add that to your ten percent, that can be all-inclusive. But we really want to, I really want to know, what does this city look like if we reduce our expenditures? And it can't all be in operations, it can't all be in, 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 in supplies, it's gonna have to be in personnel. I do have some concerns that I will share with you, uh, I'll, I'll send it to you in, in the form of me, in email. I do have some personnel concerns that I think we need to look very closely at, uh, but it's gonna take reducing personnel in order to get where we need to be. I mean, when we got here, we inherited this large staff. And over the years, it has grown beyond our control, and now, e- every year, we're struggling to try to balance a budget and take care of the needs of the city. But yet, we don't lay anybody off, and on the other side of that, employees who come and do what they're supposed to do, we cannot compensate them adequately, we can't give them a raise. We haven't been able to give them a raise in years. Um, in terms of our police department, I have to agree with Dr. Wood, in terms of the police department, uh, I'm hoping that we're able to hold true to, uh, our commitment to the citizens in terms of increasing, or, or, let me say this, not increasing, but maintaining what we put in place back in the spring, was it? It was, it was this summer, yeah, this past summer. I hope that we can hold true to that because that was our commitment. And I'll say this, public works, some of the hardest working guys we got, haven't been able to give them a raise in three, four years. That department, we probably not gonna be able to touch personnel, but there are some other departments that we truly need to take a look at. I am a proponent for having skilled employees who can do multiple jobs. Uh, and so, and, and I, and I know it sounds like a tough conversation to have now, but if we don't do it now, we'll be right back here next October having this same conversation in the summer about what do we do? And, and, and it's time for us to start being able to produce. In terms of, uh, increasing, uh, revenue, I think we need to set ourselves a goal. I'd use, I'd take parks and recreation, for example. I think there needs to be a concerted effort, and, and I don't mean to put it all on you because I have some ideas, um, I know Mr. Knight has brought some, Commissioner Knight has brought some things to the dius, but there needs to be a concerted effort for parks and recreation to at least be able to meet us fifty percent or sixty percent of the way when it comes into their expenditures. And I believe there are some things that we can do if we just restructure it just a little bit different. Um, in terms of, um, public work services, I know we did, I'm not sure if we actually, did we, I know we addressed the utilities, uh, fees, but I'm not sure if we addressed, uh, public, uh, public works fees in terms of trash pickup, Mr. Ash. Did we change, did we change any of those fees? I, I'm just trying, I can, I'm just trying to remember off the top of my head.
It just recently increased.
Recently, okay, so, so we, okay, okay, so. That's right, okay, so, so we did, so we have started making strides in terms of bringing in additional revenue, but not building and planning. We, yeah, we need to address building and planning, um, and I would not be so quick to caution us into looking at our own trash pickup. I can't honestly say that I wouldn't go down that road until I can see clean numbers in front of me. I would like to know, what does it cost? What would it cost in terms of employees, what would it cost in terms of equipment, what do we, what would it cost in terms of training? It's, I mean, I understand Mr. Ash and Mr. Bell has done, has been in conversation with waste management, Waste Pro. But I, I can't honestly say, let's not look at that without having hard numbers in front of us to say, is it worth our while? Or is it not worth our while? So I think we need to explore that and not just leave it at they're negotiating the contract. And so my goal is next year this time, we're not having the tough conversations, but we're talking about the things that we want to see happen that fiscal year for the City of Quincy. And not spend all this time struggling and trying to figure out, you know, how do we balance a budget and how do we keep our heads above water? I've done this so long, too long, and it's been the same cycle every single year. And, uh, I worked with you in the past, and, uh, if there's anybody that I think can get it done, I, I, I think you can get it done, Mr. Milton, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and if I may, let me just, just remind you, um, it's not a tough conversation for me, not at all. It's just, uh, providing information, making recommendations, and finding something that we're gonna be able to agree on because you will get some recommendations, I promise you that. It may not be to the extent that we're talking now, but there will be some. As I navigate and talk to individuals and put together a plan, uh, there will be a plan, hopefully sooner than later. Um, and I'm not privy to prior things. I've been trying to find a video that I could actually look at and take the time to see for the past several months, meetings and see things that's in there, but yet, I'm yet to, to be able to do that. I could see some that I can't hear what's going on or just whatever. So the police department and what you did in the spring, I need to be aware of that, and, and I haven't been given that. And so various things that have taken place, uh, and again, I invite you all to please, uh, sit down and talk with me, go to, send it to me in an email or put it in my hand like some people to give me a book almost. Uh, but I'm gonna go through it all and put some things there, and it won't be a, a product that is not gonna need some adjustments probably, but it will be, uh, some things in. And so provide me with as much as you possibly can, and we'll definitely try to incorporate some things. I firmly believe that budget is very, very important. I firmly believe that any organization that are struggling financially is having a difficult time to be successful. And so we must find a way to make sure that, that we're not budget poor.
Commissioner Stevens.
Would it be your intention to bring this back to us tomorrow night to vote on these, these projected savings? In a workshop tonight, vote on it tomorrow night? Is that your intention?
Well, I wasn't quite so sure because Ms. Daniels and I had the discussion about, okay, what is really the goal here tonight? And is it, there was a mention of ten percent? Is it just taking every budget or taking the thirty-eight million something and finding a way to take out three million for which now becomes things that you all would approve? I just couldn't do that. I'll be honest with you. I couldn't find a way to take three million dollars out of something that we're operating. Realizing that although we want more money, hopefully every one of these departments, because we've told them, I've told them, let's try to not spend one hundred percent of everything and not just go spend them because we have it. Hopefully, we will have some funds at the end of the year. But, so now that we, I know, and matter of fact, it was just changed a minute ago, not changed, but it made it clear to take the dollars that we have already taken out before we bring back the additional ten percent with the balance of that. The only thing that I, that I'm concerned about is that if the department has the chief and all that do that, and you take a look at it, then you might think that there's something in there that they could actually do when they're actually putting it there, just to satisfy the ten percent requirement. So I just wanna use caution that we make it clear to them that this is, we're providing this information, and then you all will chew on it and see, you know, what we wanna go back and take more out of before you finalize it, if that makes sense.
I would recommend bringing this document back for a formal vote tomorrow night. And we at least. You know, score touchdown with this, and then we continue the exercise. And you're right, look, you know, working in state government, you know, I was there in ninety-two and ninety-four when the state had to make drastic cuts to their budget. And, you know, what did the agencies offer up? Highway Safety offered up seventy-five trooper positions. Well, you know good and well, eliminate seventy-five trooper positions when they got two thousand employees sitting out there at the Kirkman Building, right? But that, so, so those games that state agencies would play, we're not, that's not what we wanna see. And I know it's, it is an exercise, but, but it is one that we have to continue to look forward to. And then again, as you're on board, as you start digging into things, and as, as other commissioners have said, the efficiencies, maybe there's a better way through reorganization. Those may be some of the things you come back and say, we can save X positions or X, eliminate two positions if we combine this, cross-strain here and there. So, you know, I know you've been drinking through the fire hose for the last four days. And, but, yeah, I think we wanna see this as a vote item tomorrow night.
Commissioner Harris.
I totally agree, the Mayor Pro Tim. This is a start, this is doable, let's vote on it, and let's, let's move forward with this so that this is behind us, and then we can keep, and like, and I like the word you used, exercise. It's an exercise. And, and the idea of the exercise is not for staff to just sit us ten percent. That doesn't make sense. Hey, if you gotta come and say, look, here's what ten percent look like, but guys, I'm gonna be honest, I can't do the job like this. I, I mean, it's not, I don't plan to come here and just grab it, okay, ten percent, bam, we ready to vote, and we out the door going home and leave us, you know. I want us to have the conversation back and forth between management, directors, and this dius so that we can have an understanding. And that's why I'd much rather them do it than we sit here and try to make recommendations because they're the ones that's doing the work every day. But at the same time, when they come with the recommendations, don't eliminate all the police cars and you're gonna keep all the police there. I mean, I mean, don't, don't, don't get rid of all of the tractors, but all the tractor drivers are still employed. I mean, make it, you know what I'm saying? And it is an exercise, and I'm willing to work through this. I mean, I'm not in a hurry. I just want, I just don't wanna be where we are this time next year, dealing with the same financial issue. I wanna see us in a much better place. And I said that to say, there are seven departments here that I don't see listed, you know. I want every department to tighten the bill, including this commission. I think we removed something from our budget if I'm not mistaken.
We made a recommendation of ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, we're not exempt from, from, from this process as well. And, and like I say, once we tighten the bill, then we can go back and loosen it up as we work our way through and see the needs. I can tell you right now, Public Works and Utilities, it's gonna be difficult for them. But, I mean, what does that look like if we have to, you know, get to a point where we got, I mean, is that three employees? Is that four employees? And how will that impact the service that they provide to the customer? See, I would like to have a director be able to tell me all of that, and, and, and we be able to make an educated decision. I think a lot of times, and, well, let me say this, I speak for myself. A lot of times, we make decisions up here without knowing the ins and outs of everyday operations. And I don't wanna put our staff in a situation, but at the same time, I think we all agree that we've got to approach this thing a little bit different if we're gonna see some, some success in the future.
Well, I definitely, uh, will invite the directors and the chiefs in to be a part of that. And I'll request that maybe once their section finish, that they're dismissed so that they won't have to spend the whole, the whole time. And I'll pull them out by lottery or something so that, and because that could take some time, and, and we should have the time and take the time, but we may not wanna let all ten of them or nine of them ever sit through the whole thing.
Also, as we talk about Public Works not getting raises, our utility line men, women have not gotten raises as, for a while as well. So we have a number of departments that are in need of additional money based on their work performance. Pardon? Well, yeah, well, that too. But we have to go back to, are we productive or what are we doing? Commissioner Wood.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Daniels, in the, it just, just, recreation coordinator and the recreation supervisor, is that still in the budget? Cause they're both vacant, right?
No.
They're not?
There's one recreation coordinator. We eliminated the other recreation coordinator, I believe, in last fiscal year's budget. So there's one recreation coordinator that is filled. There is a recreation supervisor that is vacant. The coordinator is filled.
The coordinator is filled, but there's a supervisor that's vacant. So.
Pardon?
I guess my, what's the difference between the coordinator and the supervisor?
That was a question from the other end of the table.
I'm trying to see that, do we need both of them? You know, I'm just saying, could we use that? Okay, I'm just saying. I don't know the difference between the jobs.
You'll bring it back to us.
Okay. Just asking, is that something that one, but yes, thank you. Just, just came up, thank you.
Commissioner Knight, did you, that was the same comment? Okay, it was the same comment, okay. Any other recommendations to the city manager Milton and our finance director? So we expect to see this back tomorrow for an agenda item and approval. That will be added to the agenda. Ms. Daniels.
Can we bring it back at a later date? And here's why. This affects our, well, no, this affects our overall budget. So this would technically be a budget amendment, which has to be advertised and all of those things.
Oh, correct, correct. So not, so not at our tomorrow's meeting, but.
So could we start operating melodies, but then go through all the processes that need to be done before we officially? But could we, could I say to the East Department, these are the things which we're wanting to do, and then let her expeditiously work the process for the battle?
We would advertise in the very first meeting in November, or if there was desire to have a meeting before that.
The first meeting in November, as long as we begin to operate and to put some operational things in place. Is that? Commissioner Wood.
I was just gonna say, cause we may actually, you may end up doing a couple more things in the budget prior to that. So it would be nice to have it all at once. And then, so I think, yes, that would give us, when is our first meeting? Oh, we don't have one.
It's in November.
Eleven?
No, it's, it's the thirteenth. It's the thirteenth because Veterans Day is on that Tuesday, and we voted to move it to that Thursday. So it'll be the thirteenth.
Is that enough time?
Yes.
I, I still think that it may be necessary in order for, uh, Management Milton to do what he asked of us tonight. I think it may be necessary tomorrow was to still vote on a recommendation and have the budget amendment brought back if we actually approve the budget amendment once it's brought back. But I think it's necessary if we vote on this recommendation so that that gives him the authority to go ahead and implement it.
And that works.
Yeah, and, and, and I would be understanding that the budget amendment has to come back. But just to satisfy his request, can he start now? I think he would need that recommendation. Yeah, just a simple vote to approve the recommendation. And I think there may be several of the recommendations that we vote, and then they often come back in the form of a budget amendment.
May I insert, and I forgot that and should have mentioned it at the beginning, Attorney Gary Roberts' mother passed on Friday. And we send him our condolences and please hold up his family and himself in prayer. Just, just to, before I forget. Commissioner Knight, did you have a comment? I thought I heard, saw your hand while I was talking about Attorney Roberts.
No comment.
Okay. So we're in agreement to bring it back tomorrow for a vote of agreement so that we'll give you authority to move forward as we begin to procedurally put into place a budget meeting for November thirteenth. Okay?
I have one additional item if I may.
Yes, sir.
And I think we cleared it up today while using the building, but I just wanna make sure that all of the commissioners are on the same understanding. Our clerk, city clerk, interim, ordered my attention on Friday, I believe it was, that Thursday, I think it was Friday probably. She was under the impression that her role as purchasing would be shifted to finance while she was the interim. And then, once the interim period expires, then she would no longer be employed because the purchasing had been shifted. I was under the impression that you all made her the interim slant purchasing agent and continue to hold the responsibilities of purchasing and the interim. And matter of fact, there was an increase of, I believe, in salary, so she would be dual employed.
The latter is my understanding. The latter was what you explained, was my understanding.
The mayor said today, but I just wanna make sure that all of you, because she heard something different. I should hold off on, hold off on doing that.
Which is why I'm suggesting that whenever we approve a recommendation, that we actually vote on it because we have a lot of discussion around this dius and a lot of ideas are thrown out. But it doesn't become effect until we actually approve the recommendation.
And I think the issue, if I may, Mayor, thank you. I think the issue is the workload. I think that's part of the issue. Now, we never clarified it, let me just be clear. We did not clarify that.
That piece we didn't.
We did not. It is not, that was not the agreement we didn't clarify. We just said she would be the interim clerk. We actually did not clarify the purchasing. What we did recommend was that purchasing fall under the umbrella of finance. Now, that was not carried through with the vote or anything. But I think this commission, this, on this dius, that's, that's something we'd like to happen down the road. But we did not clarify her position as interim clerk slash purchasing. So we may need to clarify that tonight so that we're, you know, we're clear. And I know that, I know the clerk job carries a lot, I'm not sure about purchasing, but if she's going to be doing both jobs, you know, then we need to clarify it.
And moving forward, when I'm, when I'm here moving forward, a lot of discussion, I will at the end just say and bring it forward to make sure that there's a clear understanding because, trust me, I know the communication, we say one thing, somebody take it the other way. And so now you have it clear.
Thank you. But did, but did we still clarify? I mean, so, I mean, we said it, but we did not put it in any detail or.
Well, that was, the only other thing is, I was going to suggest that the mayor meet and talk about expectations and make it clear as far as the role and the responsibilities. And of course, she's been so helpful with me navigating and pointing out things. Of course, I'm not giving her a whole lot of work, not yet, but. So as I try to navigate and she try to navigate, we're working closely to try to make sure that we have things. But I think since she reports to you all, to the board or commission, that there should be a meeting to talk about those expectations. And there is not a whole lot to help us to navigate through to let her know that, Mayor, you would be the front of contact if there's something outside that she needs direction and power to.
We've done some, some of that, and I have assured her that I'm there for her support in case she has any question. So I, our communicating, I don't think it's gonna be a problem moving forward. I just don't know what her responsibilities as purchasing, and she's gonna have to communicate that as we go through this interim piece.
She's been in purchasing long enough to, I hope she knows and understands. Well, she's been there in that role along the left, but it's just her clerk to make sure.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm there as her support system, her whatever questions. And we have worked together a weekend, we did, hung together a weekend, so, on getting the packet and everything out. And so we'll, I'll continue to support, I have no problems doing that. Commissioner Harris, you had a.
I was just gonna say, in terms of clarifying, if we need to vote, because we did not clarify in the last meeting. So tomorrow night, at the, at the commission meeting, we could just make it clear so it'll be in the minutes exactly what the expectation was, and that there was no change in terms of her current role, and that her compensation should, should match the dual, dual role. So we could.
She didn't have a question about that.
Oh.
Maybe we did.
I think that was taken care of.
So that we clarified.
Yeah, yeah, I was taken care of by HR.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was taken care of by HR.
We clarified, because we didn't, and she's right, we just kinda left it open-ended.
Do, do we need to bring something back to you, or could I just remind you that we?
Yeah, I think it's just a form of a motion that clarifies exactly what, what the expectation was.
Commissioner Knight?
Yes, that answered one of the two questions that I had, that we just need to make a motion tomorrow on that matter. And the second one, did we ever put it up for a vote for the clerk advertisement position?
Yeah, we did.
Did that, did they?
Yeah, supposedly been thirty days.
It is being advertised.
It is, okay.
Mm-hmm, yes. Commissioner Wood, you had something?
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, doing a workshop? No. It was adjournment. It was adjourned, but if... No, no, not doing a workshop. All right. Meeting adjourned.